Thank you for coming tonight. I call the City Council Redevelopment Agency of November 28th, 2011 to order. If you can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and please stay standing after the pledge for a special presentation. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you all for still standing. We have a special night tonight. Tonight is Randy Royce's 61st birthday. So if you will all please join me in singing "Happy Birthday." This may be a first for the City Council meetings, but we are going to sing to Randy. So everyone, happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
We have food?
Happy birthday, dear Randy. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much. Now everyone can sit.
You just wanted the cream puff.
And thank you, Yvette, for bringing some delicious treats to everyone. It should be Randy's birthday every two weeks.
Every week if we knew we were going to get sweets.
Okay, we're going to go to item number two, changes to the order agenda. Mr. Moffey?
No changes to the agenda this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, report from closed session. Mr. Rudens?
No reports from the closed session at the special meeting.
Okay, we will start with council communications and announcements. We'll start on my right, Mr. Lewis?
None, thank you.
Mr. Grisilli?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Royce?
Nothing.
Mr. Grocott?
Nothing.
Wow, and I have about five, so here we go. We have a lot of things coming up here in San Carlos, so I'm going to run down a quick list of what's going on this weekend and next weekend. First up, this Friday, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on the 6 to 700 blocks of Laurel, is the Night of Holiday Lights, where we light Laurel Street up for the holiday season. There'll be a lot of events for the kids. There'll be a train ride, a slide, arts and crafts. Santa's going to show up. There'll be some bands. It's going to be a great time. So 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. the Night of Holiday Lights, the lights will go on at about 6:30. Number two, the following day, we have a Laurel Street cleanup, which is from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30. The volunteers, if you'd like to volunteer, please meet at Laurel Street Park at 9:00 a.m. If you'd like to call an RSVP, please call our volunteer coordinator, Teagan, and her phone number is 802-4382 at the Parks and Rec Department and let them know you're coming. But it's 9:00 to 10:30 on Laurel Street and meeting at Laurel Street Park. Then, almost at the same time, we have Santa arrives at Hiller Aviation Museum that is starting at 9:30, and visits with Santa will go from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Santa will be arriving by helicopter, after which he will be going downtown and he'll be available for the children from 12:30 to 2:00 at Bank of America. Also on Saturday, we have a toy drive from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. It is being sponsored by the Sheriff's Department, the San Carlos Bureau, the Kiwanis Club, Bean Kinney's Market, and the San Carlos Fire Department. If you want to come on by, all four organizations will be out there. There'll be a fire engine and a police motorcycle, I believe, and Bean Kinney's Market, of course, is sponsoring that event as well. So that's 10 to 2:00. Please bring a new unwrapped toy gamer book to be donated to a local family in need, and this will go to San Carlos families in need, and cash donations are accepted. And lastly, on December 10th, Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at L'Oriola Park, we will be celebrating Arbor Day. We'll be planting some trees in honor of that event. It's put on by our Parks and Rec Department and made possible by the Lions Club, who donated $2,000 for us to plant trees in L'Oriola Park. So after that, we'll have item number five. We have two great presentations tonight. The first of all will be a proclamation honoring the 50th anniversary of Babe Ruth League Baseball in San Carlos. It's their national championship 50th anniversary. And then we'll be having a proclamation honoring Jeffrey Stern of Jeffrey's Diamonds upon his retirement. So I will head on down. It's the most talking I'm doing tonight, I promise.
Hopefully the most singing.
So Jim Magnuson, if you'd like to head on up here. We will have a PowerPoint while I talk as well.
I can't see you, sir.
All right, Jim, if you want to face this way with me. We're going to talk to them. Okay, so are you ready, Christine? Okay, we're putting this proclamation together congratulating San Carlos Babe Ruth League Baseball upon its 50th anniversary of the 1961 World Championship. And I'm going to read it because this is such a special event. Whereas the sport of baseball expresses the heart and character of America and for many years has been properly recognized as our nation's favorite pastime, and whereas in 1961, the San Carlos Babe Ruth League baseball team was managed by Bill Conley, Sr., and coached by Bob Flanagan, players included the following: Bill Bowles, Bill Lottsch, Steve Karya, Bob Pindro, Jim McBride, Bill Alexander, Joe Judge, Jr., Bob Hooper, Ken Cambick, Rick Brown, Jim Magnuson, Mike Tyson -- not that Mike Tyson -- Marty Redman, Dick Vannal, Keith Woods, and Kerry Cambick as bat boy. And whereas before becoming the 1961 World Champions, the San Carlos team had to jump many hurdles, including winning the area tournament, which brought all San Mateo County teams to Burton Park in July of 1961, followed by the district tournament held in San Lorenzo for Bay Area teams. And whereas after winning the district title, the San Carlos team journeyed to Woodland to capture the Northern Divisional Championship, followed by a trip to Honolulu to compete in the Pacific Southwest Regional Tournament played at Fort Shafter Field, defeating teams from Reno and Phoenix and winning the right to go to the World Series. And whereas San Carlos won the national title on August 28th, 1961, at Glendale, Montana, defeating a Babe Ruth team from Inglewood, New Jersey, with a remarkable record which included winning 14 straight tournament games to finish on top. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Andy Klein, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, hereby congratulate San Carlos Babe Ruth League Baseball upon its 50th anniversary of the 1961 World Championship and extend to all members our sincere congratulations on this special occasion and urge all citizens to beware of the importance of the organization and development of our youth. Thank you very much. And we just have a special thank you. John Ward's not here tonight, but he sent us a bunch of pictures, and they're all available on goodoldsandlotdays.com. It's a website he's put together for old-time baseball, if you want to check that out. Jim, we'd love to hear about the World Championship, anything you've got to say.
Okay. This is kind of a special team and a special year here, 1961. It was an awful long time ago, 50 years. Fifteen players, 13 to 15, manager and a coach, and we had a lot of support from the community and people in youth baseball. We are pretty special players, and we won five tournaments and went to the World Series. And this is a picture that we took after the community, San Carlos got together and bought us all new uniforms. In fact, this is it? Doesn't fit anymore. Next slide, I guess.
You know me, I don't know what I'm doing here.
Yeah, I haven't seen the presentation. Let's see, we went, I think John took a lot of the fodder here with the proclamation, but we played locally in a tournament here in San Carlos, and the first three tournaments were all single elimination. And then we went to the state tournament eventually in Woodland and then got a special trip to Hawaii. It was just kind of neat for 13 and 14 and 15-year-olds. This is a program from, I guess this is a program from one of the tournaments. It was kind of a special time in San Carlos, really back when youth baseball was kind of new here. The Little League was created, and we were the first teams to play Little League in San Carlos, so our parents started the Little League. And after Little League, we started the Babe Ruth League, and both first years we couldn't play in the tournaments. The first year in the tournament, our All-Star team lost the first game, and we represented the All-Star team in the second year, 1961, and had quite a run. The community was really pretty joused and pretty supportive of the whole situation. This is Glendale, Montana, and this is an ex-friend, or still a good friend, Kenny Cambick scoring from third base on a bunt. They set a record at Glendale for the most fans ever in a World Series. It was really a small town. We stayed with families in their homes, no motels, and we were a pretty, pretty good team. In fact, 20 years later, our manager was talking to the district and the national representatives, and they said San Carlos was still one of the best teams they'd ever seen play. This is welcome home after the World Series. It's a bus, no plane rides to Glendale, Montana. And this bus is coming in here. This is Burton Park in the, I want to say Chestnut Street, coming in, and all the fans were there to meet the bus as we came back from winning the championship in Glendale. There weren't cell phones and things like that in the old days. We had, I think there was over 700 people called the local newspaper to find out the scores of the games at night, and then the next morning they would call again to find out who had won the games. There was a gentleman that lived right here on this street, Mr. Monroe, who wrote for the Redwood City Tribune at that time, the major paper in the area, and he followed the team up to Glendale, and he would telephone back the scores for the locals to find out what was going on up there in the tournament, along with a bunch of parents who went there. Well, it was a special time for San Carlos and a magical time and a magical team, and it was quite a summer.
Well, thank you, Jim, and send our deepest appreciation to all of the teammates you still talk to.
That's it?
Thank you very much for coming.
Still see a few.
Okay, next up, we have another big proclamation. Jeffrey Stern, if you'd like to come up and if you'd like to bring your wife, I know she's not feeling her weather, oh, just Jeffrey. That's the way we always get you, isn't it? All right, well, today, this is a bittersweet moment for a lot of us who know Jeffrey. We are congratulating Jeffrey on his retirement. Jeffrey, of course, owns Jeffrey Diamonds and Goldsmith, so I'm going to read this because it's got some great tidbits put together by our city clerk. Whereas Jeffrey Stern began his career in 1979 at Dankins of San Carlos as the manager of jewelry at 1245 San Carlos Avenue, following the footsteps of his father, H.C. Stern, a jeweler in San Francisco. And whereas on Friday, the 13th of May, 1983, Jeffrey Stern opened Jeffrey's Diamonds and Goldsmiths next door to their current location at 626 Walnut Street. In addition to being the sole proprietor, he held other prestigious positions such as salesperson, bookkeeper, jewelry repair person, and janitor. And whereas Jeffrey Stern, a 21-year resident, has generously donated his time and efforts into the community by holding positions on the city's Economic Development Advisory Commission, vice president of San Carlos Chamber of Commerce, and headed its West Side Business Council, as well as coaching Little League Baseball in San Carlos. And whereas at one point, Jeffrey's Diamonds and Goldsmiths was in the city's top 10 sales tax producers on the west side of the city of San Carlos. And whereas it is rumored that Jeffrey Stern holds more secrets than a barber shop, has fired more employees than Donald Trump, is hated by most husbands and loved by most wives, and knows more about the behind-the-scenes happenings at Chickens Ball than anyone in the history of San Carlos. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by I, Andy Klein, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, that Jeffrey Stern of Jeffrey's Diamonds and Goldsmiths hereby congratulate upon his retirement after 28 years of successful business in the city of San Carlos. And a little tidbit, I think most of the people in here have shopped at Jeffrey's at one time or the other. I bought my wedding rings from Jeffrey, so this is a great moment for us. I see Yvette Royce bought a necklace from Jeffrey, so we'd love to hear about your 28 years here, Jeffrey, and please feel free to fill us in on what you're going to do with your retirement.
Do you hate me for spending money?
Just a little bit.
All right. So first, what I'd like to do is I would like to dedicate this to Mayor Omar Ahmed, who was a dear friend, I think a dear friend to a lot of us, but such a brother to me, unbelievable. Helped me tremendously with my online business. Number two, I'd like to say that it is such an honor and a pleasure to live and work in San Carlos, and I truly mean that. It's mind-blowing, and it's such a gentle place, and, you know, it's an honor, and I don't mean that loosely. It is such an honor to be here. It's such good karma. And number three, I know I get verbose, but I wanted to summarize my experience of living and working in San Carlos in as few words as possible, so I came up with one word because I know I talk too much, but that word is kindness, and I think that's really what the city symbolizes to me and what the citizens symbolize to me, is just pure kindness. So thank you.
As I know most of you came for that and the 50-year anniversary, thank you very much for coming. You can feel free to go about your night. We're going to start our business. Okay, we will get going with item number six, public comment. This is reserved for a public comment, not for items on the agenda, as I have no public comment cards. I imagine no one's here to speak. Okay, moving on to item number seven, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Mr. Grocott, I believe you have a couple to pull.
Correct. I wanted to pull, I believe, do I need to pull both of these, F and G, I guess?
Yeah, my suggestion, Councilmember Grocott, is that you pull both.
Both, okay, and then I was going to also pull item M.
F, G, and N, or M, okay, F, G, and M. Are there any other council members who wish to pull any items? Are there any members of the public who wish us to pull any items? Okay, seeing none, I'll accept a motion for what's remaining.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve consent calendar items 7A through E, 7H through L.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Grocott, we'll start with 7F.
Very good. The items I wanted to discuss regarding our zoning is, towards the end of the meeting, the first one is, towards the end of the meeting, we were talking about the east-side transition zone, and there was a diagram that was shown to us that allowed for a, I believe it was a 10-foot setback and a 20-foot height limit, and I had actually suggested that we might want to add that to what the staff's recommendation was, and so I wanted to see from the council. I know we moved over that, it was late, and we kind of moved over that item, not too quickly, but there was some quickness to our step, you might say, given the hour. And so I wanted to see if there was an opportunity maybe to discuss that portion of it a little bit more and consider that item.
Okay.
And that was as opposed to the 30-foot setback that's in there?
Correct, yeah, that's what we approved.
If we're going to have Mr. Savay come up here. So, Mr. Savay, from what I recollect, the staff was okay with this recommendation because it didn't hinder the property owners any, it allowed them more flexibility?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could just bring up the graphic that was used at the last meeting so we could refresh everybody's memories about this. So this area, boy, the graphic got a little stretched out here, but essentially, what was approved at the last meeting was this graphic here, which shows a 30-foot setback with a 10-foot landscape buffer, and it would go up to 50 feet, but it would be stepped back, so the farther away from the property line you got, the more height you would get. For instance, if you were 30 feet away, you could go up to 30 feet, 40 feet away, 40 feet, and up to 50. And this allows for parking at the rear of the building, and again, this landscape setback at the rear. What was also discussed was a 10-foot setback allowing for a 20-foot height within 30 feet of the property line. Let me see if I can move this line down.
20-foot height, excuse me, Mr. Savay, within 10 feet of the setback, is that right?
That's correct, yes. So let me eliminate some of these lines here, and maybe it'd become a little clearer. So this is a little closer to what we're looking at here. So it'd be actually a 10-foot setback at the rear, not really here, but 10-foot setback up to 20 feet in height, and it would step into 30, and you can go up to 35 feet in height as a permitted height. So that's what was being suggested by the greater east San Carlos neighborhood. There was also, something similar was discussed by the Economic Development Advisory Commission. Let me see if I can get it.
I think we get the general gist of it, Mr. Savay. We'll just go with Mr. Grocott's discussion. And this is only for the south part, right? That's all you're discussing?
Correct, yes. And that's because the lots there are not too deep to begin with and not too large altogether. So it would allow for a ground-floor area of a building to 20 feet high.
Okay, do we have any council member comments on this?
I just am reluctant to go to a 10-foot setback. I believe as, in trying to accommodate the kind of business that go in there, it's better for the residential to have a 30-foot setback with a better green barrier, so I'm sort of reluctant.
Mr. Grisilli?
Yeah, I sort of have to agree with Mr. Lewis. I think the setback, I realize that you're trading, it's a trade-off with height and light perhaps, or something like that, but I really believe, I mean, it's going to be a business or it's going to be some sort of a, I don't want to say industrial, I guess isn't the right word, but it could be something, and if it's 10 feet away, I'd rather have it 30 feet away. I mean, if I was there, sound-wise, you know, maybe there's a bigger wall, but sound-wise, it seems like it'd be more bothersome if it was too close to the houses, so I sort of agree that we should leave it the way we voted on it.
Mr. Royce?
Yeah, and I'm comfortable of this, the decisions we made a couple weeks ago. I'm with the 30-foot.
Okay, and, well, before you, if you want to talk some more, Mr. Grocott, we'll let you, but I'll chime in my two cents. After thinking about this a little while and talking to staff, I'm actually comfortable with Mr. Grocott's decision. This was also suggested by the greater east side as well. I think it allows more flexibility to actually industrial owners, and I just think if the residents had a major problem with it, they would never have suggested allowing the industries to be closer. We're still offering some, you know, we still have a height limit and others, but I think this actually favors the industrial property owners even more, and I think that's a good thing. So I'd be willing to go with Mr. Grocott, but it sounds like it might just be the two of us.
Well, maybe we could pull somebody along? I don't know. Currently, most of those buildings that are on that street, I think that's Tanklage, is it not, that they face onto, most of them?
Terminal.
Terminal, excuse me, yeah, okay, so they're on Terminal, and then the houses are on Hall, I believe?
Yes.
Is that right? So in most of those cases, where you've got existing buildings, they're right on the property line, and they are probably a good 15 to 20 feet tall, many of them. They're just concrete tilt-up buildings. So I would think the reason the neighborhood was willing to propose the 10-foot is because it would simply give a green zone where trees could be planted and that sort of thing to buffer the, you know, soften the impact of the building, and it's a better condition than they have currently. The other aspect to it is, the mayor points out, you know, I'm looking at it as a balancing act between people who want to do industrial use and then the neighborhood, the residential neighborhood next door. So that's, you know, when I saw the proposal, I was just thinking of it as a, that area, the 20-foot height back to the 10-foot setback, as a tack-on to what staff was recommending, not going to the complete proposal of the east side, which was the 10-foot setback, 20-foot height, and then you jump up to some other height, I can't read what that is, I think it's 40 feet, and then that was it. So I was still trying to give that 50-foot height, so.
So all you're really adding is that front little rectangle, essentially?
That's correct, yeah.
So if I may add too, just to clarify that, you know, the staff's had an opportunity to talk with the folks on the east side who recommended this as the only option for those properties, which wasn't what came through the planning commission. What the council approved last time, that you can see up there in sort of the purple highlighted areas, would be one option. This wouldn't replace that option, it would just be in addition to option, and I think it's very important that we would be maintaining that 10-foot green zone around the neighborhood, which is also very important to them. So we're supporting this recommendation.
Are there any other comments, or we will entertain a motion. Mr. Grocott, do you want to give it a shot?
Sure. So I would just, I would make a motion that we, help me out here, Mr. City Attorney.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment that if you make a change to the ordinance tonight, that we will have to do a reintroduction and then adopt at a future meeting, because I would consider this type of a change substantive.
Okay.
As opposed to clerical. So your motion would be to amend the introduction and put forward an amended ordinance for introduction.
Okay, so I would move that we amend the introduction?
Yeah, amend the ordinance and reintroduce.
Okay, so amend the ordinance and reintroduce this change to what we approved, which is to do a 10-foot setback with a 20-foot height until you reach the next height there, which is, I think, 30 feet?
35.
35 feet?
I thought it was 35, yeah.
Okay, so 35 feet.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second it. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Councilmember Royce?
No.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, do we need a motion now to approve item 7F on our consent calendar?
I wasn't, I'm sorry, I wasn't through with the items of concern that I had on our zoning, so.
I'm sorry, are you still on F?
I believe so.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, that's all right, yeah.
Never mind.
So the second item that I came in and I talked to staff about is applications that might come in from faith-based organizations like churches or synagogues who want to locate in San Carlos at a location that's not currently a church or synagogue or whatever faith-based organization it is. And when I asked about that at the last meeting, the consultant gave an answer that it is possible, there are areas and so forth, and I was interested enough in the issue to come in and meet with staff and have them walk me through as though I was an applicant for something like that. And what I found out is that there's no area in San Carlos currently where a church or a similar organization could come in and create a new home for themselves without going through a conditional use permit process, which is a little bit more involved, a little bit more expensive. In other words, there's no, right now, you know, we have areas that are carved out for commercial use, for industrial use, for residential use, where it's straight up, that's, you know, that's how it's zoned, and if that's what your application is, you're approved, essentially. There might be things you have to go through, like with residential, like a design review committee or something like that, but the use is approved and there's no extra hoops to jump through. It's become over the years a situation where churches don't have that allowance, if you will. We must have had that at some time, because we've got Trinity, we've got Lutheran, we've got the Baptist Church, and other organizations like that that have campuses in San Carlos. But if any new organization wants to come in, they would have to go through this special process, no matter where they go in town. And I'm just not sure that A sends the right message to those kinds of organizations, and B, I'm not sure that we couldn't find an area in town where something like that would be approved, and then leave it that if you wanted to go to a different part of town that it's not approved, then yes, you'd have to go through a use permit process.
Okay, does staff have any thoughts, and then we'll get to you in a second here, Mr. Royce, Mr. Savay?
Certainly, yeah, and discussing the reason that some businesses or uses have the need for a conditional use permit. Historically, churches generate a lot of traffic and a lot of parking on a Sunday, and so historically, they've been, a lot of times, in residential neighborhoods. And so when a new church comes into a residential neighborhood, the conditional use permit allows for a public setting at a planning commission meeting or another committee meeting to allow both sides to state their case, for the church to say how they're going to be a good member of the community, and for the neighborhood to express their concerns to the committee in a public forum. And so that's really, it's a trigger mechanism.
And so that's really, it's a trigger mechanism to trigger a public dialogue because of the inherent impacts that churches have. Also, churches in the last few years have started to do other things, like have schools and have night training and lease their building for other uses. And so their use has expanded over the years for assembly space and that kind of thing. So you have now issues in neighborhoods at night as well. And so the conditional use permit process allows you to go through and apply conditions for operation and make sure that their parking and traffic is correct. And so that's the reason that these particular uses require a conditional use permit in our city. I would note, just to clarify, that the newer ordinance does say that if you're under 3,500 square feet, that you don't require a conditional use permit, but anything over 3,500 square feet, you do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Savay. I'm Mr. Royce. You have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I actually had a discussion with Al a couple of weeks ago just about this, because in our zoning, I wanted to make sure we did identify areas like schools, open space, parks, and churches. And we went through, there's color coding and it's all there. And Al, at that time, explained how the conditional use permit, especially for a certain size, would actually make sense in neighborhoods, just like along Aurora now where we have the Ventured Church, we have the Tonganese, we have Mahaney Hall, and we have, you know, how much do you put there before you start impacting the residential area and so forth? So conditional use permit is a, it's a public meeting in which everybody comes and you say, hey, does this fit into the neighborhood? So I felt good that we do have the zoning, and we do have a process if it is a larger church and so forth, that we deal with the area that we're looking at doing something with.
Okay. Are there any other comments?
Just, you know, as a, we started this discussion way back when the general plan came forward to us, and we talked about the different districts. So I think that having that discussion, this is kind of the confirmation of, I think, much discussion over time. So I think it's the conditional use permit, given the potential impact on the neighborhood, is the right way to go.
It's just a different animal than a lot of things. I mean, the church that I attend impacts the neighborhood every Sunday in a substantial way, even though we have a parking lot, a couple of parking lots, but it still, it overflows. Christmas or Easter, it really overflows. And I think, again, like Al said, trigger was the right word, it just basically allows for an extra review step that the public gets to participate in, as opposed to having things, I mean, all the time, staff, we rarely see a lot of things that get approved, you know, staff, because they go through the process. And this one, I think, when you get to a certain point, over 3,500 square feet, I think we would need to do that, because lots of people come. And I think it does impact, not saying that they shouldn't be allowed to be anywhere, but the point being, it just adds another public trigger, another input that the public gets to do. So I'd stick with the staff one on this one.
Yeah, and I'm going to agree with my fellow council members. Also, we, I know we have to be careful, because we have religious freedom in this country, so it makes it a little harder when you have churches who don't get allowed with the neighborhoods as well to say much. You know, you have churches who are very loud, you have churches who have other events that the neighborhood didn't expect coming in, and we have that issue over right by Carmine High School, and the neighborhood constantly complains, and there's very little we can do. So I think it is something that should trigger a public discussion and a public dialogue. So we have parameters under which everyone's supposed to behave, so I'm going to go with the staff recommendation as well. So, Mr. Grokot, you can make a motion, but I don't think you're going to get a second.
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay, are those all for F and G?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, then I would move approval of item 7F on the consent calendar.
And G?
And G? I'm sorry, Mr. Grokot?
I think G's, yeah.
Yeah, they're combined.
I wasn't sure. Make a motion to approve items 7F and G on the consent calendar.
Second? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Brusili?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, now moving on to item 7M. Mr. Grokot?
Item 7M, I think, may have some attachment later to what's on our, was it 9B? Yeah, the strategic plan, and I would defer to the city manager if he thinks that's so, and maybe doesn't, maybe there's nothing we need to really do about this. I know the city manager has probably talked to us individually about this item. I know he talked to me about it quite a few months back, and so I wanted to pull it, just to give an opportunity if the city manager has some comments about what's going on here with the idea of using consultant versus employee and how that might impact our city staff.
Okay. Mr. Malphy?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just quickly, a little bit of background. We have, the city's been operating without a public works director for about the last six months, and as I've mentioned to the council before, we're currently doing a study on the organizational structure and needs for the public works function, particularly engineering. Over the last five years, we've added a little bit here and taken a little bit away there, a lot of relating to budget cuts and various changes that were opportunities that came up in public works, but we haven't had an opportunity to take a really comprehensive look. So we're doing that right now. In addition to the public works, public work director vacancy, we've got another, our civil engineering associate who's been with us, Don Gilbert, for quite a number of years is retiring here in the next couple of weeks, and is presenting another opportunity to take a look at this. We've had to rely, or rather, I should say, for many years, we've utilized contract engineers for various projects and programs in the city. It's a much more cost-effective method for an organization our size to deal with and address projects as they come up and as funding becomes available, and to get certain types of engineering expertise that we need when we need them, as it varies. So we've always relied on contract engineering. Right now, we're relying more heavily on contract engineering, and we're using money that's savings from the vacant full-time positions to take a look at that. Al Savay, who's the city's community development director, has done a very admirable job of filling in as the acting public works director. And one of the options that's being studied by management partners for us is looking at the possibility of consolidating the community development and public works functions moving forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions you've got. Al can probably speak to more of the details related to exactly what some of the things this contract are going to be working on, if you have an interest.
Would you like to hear Mr. Grokot?
Well, the first question that comes to mind is the duration for this contract and how this does relate long-term to our organization. And a comment I'll add to that is, I think, you know, we went many years with having a public works director who was a contractor, who had been an employee and then became a contractor for the city, and so we used that firm for that position, if you will. And then, more recently, we, after that person retired completely, we hired a public works director. And my view from seeing how things went from the council position is that it was smooth, the applications for grants went well, projects were moving along. For instance, the project we're going to be starting very soon on Old County Road and the east side and those improvements. And I just get the feeling that we need someone on staff who can shepherd those kinds of things and speak to our community. I think one of the things that was most appreciated about the new public works director is that I heard as a council member was from citizens who said, "We really enjoy working with this new public works director. We can address issues, get our questions answered." And so I suppose the concern I have with contracting permanently for that position, if that's the ultimate goal, I don't know that it is, is that we would lose that, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And that's not what's involved in this contract tonight. This is more project-type engineering. It isn't for a public works director-type position. If that's an option that management partners recommends, if they were to recommend a contract public works director, or if they, you know, for whatever reason, that'll come back. I'm going to bring that item back to the city council for discussion on all the various options studied, and ultimately, the option that I'll be recommending to the council, probably in January or February.
Very good.
Okay, so do you have any other questions, Mr. Grokot? Okay, can we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item 7M on our consent calendar, please.
I'll second that. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Brusili?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item, as we have no reports to council, item 9A for unfinished business. Consideration of resolution upholding the appeal of June 0 and overturning the decision on the planning commission thereby denying the conditional use permit and architectural review application for a new wireless antenna facility for AT&amp;T at 260 Shelford Avenue.
Good evening, council members. The city council is November 14 meeting, voted to uphold the appeal and thereby deny the conditional use permit and architectural review permit for an AT&amp;T cell site at 260 Shelford. Based on the discussion at the city council meeting, staff has prepared a resolution that's attached to the staff report with the findings that are the basis for that denial. So the action this evening would just be to adopt the resolution. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Rubens, do you have an update for us?
Well, the reason for denying, for the written findings is federal law requires written findings to deny these types of applications, and any action in these types of matters, it's important to set up the record in case litigation is commenced. And I can tell you tonight that, just before the Thanksgiving holiday, that there was a lawsuit that was filed against the city, and I'm in consultation with the in-house council for AT&amp;T to discuss the lawsuit. I'm in the process of studying the implications of it, and that'll be subject to further reports to the council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rubens. Since it seems like there's no questions or comments, can we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number 2011 dash-
113?
113. Resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, upholding the appeal of planning commission approval of a conditional use permit and architectural review permitting six new antennas co-locating on the two existing antenna support structures at 260 Shelford Avenue, APN 049-195-080, thereby denying the conditional use permit and architectural review pursuant to San Carlos municipal code sections 18.1, 18.070A, 18.124070A, and 18.132070.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Brusili?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Moving on to 9B, consideration of approving amendments to the city's strategic plan and six-month objective matrix.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is an update on the city's strategic plan. On August 29, the council met with the city manager and the department directors for the 12th time to discuss the city's strategic issues and goals. This report will serve as the November monthly report. There are nine requested revisions tonight. Six of those are date changes, one is a consolidation of two items into one, and there are two new objectives to be added. The first revision is to change the date to study the feasibility of changing to a program-based and to a budget and make a report to council from December 15 to January 31. The date to present to council for direction possible fire station sharing between San Carlos and the county of San Mateo from December 1 to January 31. The date to update the city council on the shared track option and capacity study and its impact on San Carlos as part of the high-speed rail project from December 15 to January 31. The date to present options to the city council for action on organization alternatives for our public works department from December 15 to January 31. The date to invite at least three community organizations to participate in the current project to identify barriers to city services and programs for people with disabilities from January 1 to February 15. The next revision is a consolidation of two objectives into one, to provide an update and schedule the downtown parking master plan and a citywide parking administration report. And the date to present to council a civic facilities master plan from February 15 to a future objective. And we have two new items to be added tonight. The first is the presentation to council on the pros and cons of the ICLI membership, and the presentation to council for consideration of grant funding policy, which will be a future objective. There are 14 objectives that have been completed, including the following: hold the city council study session regarding the potential elimination of the RDA; provide a report to city council on the dissolution process of the current fire JPA; present to city council an update on police services; present a plan to the city council on moving police dispatch to the county; begin fire services for the San Carlos Fire Department; identify and provide emergency preparedness training to those employees who need it; complete Oriola Park playground development and hold the ribbon cutting; recommend to the city council for action options for the library interior renovation project; conduct a feasibility study on the use of synthetic turf at Crispie Park; present to the city council for consideration a policy on electronic communications and devices; present to city council for consideration a city manager newsletter for distribution to the community; analyze and present options for public kiosks throughout the city; hold the first quarterly meeting with representatives of key community volunteer groups and service clubs to coordinate community events and volunteer efforts; and finally, to identify at least 10 volunteers to help with the monthly trash removal at public gathering areas. So in summary, we have 14 items completed and nine requested revisions tonight. The next strategic plan meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 29. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Mendenhall. Mr. Grokot, you have a question?
I just have a question from staff on this report, it's item 7, I think, the facilities' master plan, and just putting a future date on that instead of something date-specific.
Yeah, that plan is underway, but it won't be completed in the timeframe of this strategic plan, and has been the practice in the past. We've just simply listed it as a future date when it can't be completed within the six months of the plan. I believe it's targeted to be done in May. So if the council wanted to, you know, say, you know, May 15 this year, or direct us to roll it over into the next strategic plan, that would be fine. But the project has been started. We have hired a facility master planner to work with us, and it's begun.
Through the chair? So, and we're combining the parking element with that? Is that the idea there?
No, the parking element was with the downtown master plan, correct?
That wasn't the combined?
No.
Okay.
No, civics was a standalone.
Downtown parking master plan and the citywide parking administration report.
Got you, thank you. And then on 13, was there a report, council, on the first quarterly meeting with representatives of key community volunteer groups and service clubs? Was that in the newsletter, council, or did we get a report on that?
Mr. Malphy?
You know, I don't recall offhand. I want to say it was in the newsletter, but we could, I could look at that and send you an email.
Okay, just thought that there could be a good sort of synergistic conversation that may have taken place there, and opportunity for council to sort of engage those groups. So I was just looking forward to that.
We can agenda it, so we'll leave a report to council in the new year.
Sounds good.
Okay. Can we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the amendments to the city's strategic plan and six-month objective matrix.
For a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, through the chair, I'm advised by our city attorney that for the motion that I made for items 7F and 7G, I should have read the titles for those. So if we could go back and reconsider those items, and I'll make-
We can, if you can make a motion.
An amended motion here to approve item 7F, which is the second reading of amendments to title, 18 zoning text and map, including amendments in errata.
to title 18 zoning text and map including amendments in errata. Is that appropriate, Mr.? And for 7G, the second reading of amendments to title 18 zoning text and map including amendments to the San Carlos municipal code updating Title 8 Health and Safety, Title 9 Public Peace and Welfare, Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places, Title 13 Public Services, Title 15 Building and Construction, and Title 17 Subdivisions.
For a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
We're not going to discuss those items? I'm sorry. Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, now, back on track to new business. Item 10A, consideration of introducing ordinance amending the San Carlos municipal code, Chapter 1032, parking, 72-hour parking on the 1700 block of Laurel Street between Eaton Avenue and St. Francis Way. Mr. Savay?
Good evening, all of you. Mayor, members of the city council, this is a request to change the parking signage as noted from four hours to two hours in the 1700 block of Laurel Street. On this area, you'll see the area in red is the area that we'll be discussing. It's between Eaton Avenue and St. Francis at the north side. And there's 12 parking spaces along this section, about 14 along here. And what has happened over the years is, this is the last four-hour parking area on Laurel Street left. And as, over the years, as businesses have changed block to block and the intensity of parking needs has gone up with new businesses, the city has looked at these individually and changed them over the years. So city staff has had some complaints about parking turnover. With the current four-hour parking in this area, we see that people use it for four hours and they park in front of the businesses. So some of the businesses are concerned that they're not getting enough customer turnover. Moving to a two-hour parking would allow for more customer turnover as we see an intensification and changeover from the offices that are here, the large offices, to smaller businesses that require their clients to have quick parking, be able to kind of visit a couple of different retail locations. So we've seen businesses change, some smaller businesses in here. We have day spa, we have Max BBQ, barbershop and others. And so this would encourage that turnover, going from a four-hour to a two-hour. At the last Transportation and Circulation Commission meeting on October 18, the Transportation and Circulation Commission recommended that the city council make this change from four hours to two hours, and that concludes the staff presentation.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Savay? Mr. Royce?
Yeah, Al, so of course, one of the new activities in this area is the success of the office. And parking is probably a greater concern at lunchtime, middle of the day, at dinnertime, it starts to weed out and so forth. Have we ever worked with some education or enforcement of having, forcing employees to park outside the area?
Not on the streets, but in the city parking lots, we have the employee permit program. So, you know, at least we have, you know, they pay to park in those locations and we have some management of those locations.
I'm familiar with that, but, you know--
Not on Laurel Street.
But we've never gone up to businesses, like go into the office, knock on their door and say, hey, we need to kind of work out an issue here, you're creating great success for yourself, which we love, and great success for the people of San Carlos, because a lot of people go there, but we got to work on parking.
Yes, and we do often work with businesses. You know, we meet with the businesses regularly for one reason or another, and we'll have these discussions with the management of these businesses, and a lot of times, they're very agreeable to those kinds of things. I think that, you know, the owners of the office, they are familiar, and I think they recognize that there's parking issues, particularly in the evening hours. And so we've had some discussions with them about that, so they're aware of the problem. Getting their employees to park elsewhere, the question is, where do you park?
Yeah.
And there is public transportation there. There's, Sam Trans has a bus stop right up the street and, of course, the train. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, just an idea, trying to work with the vendors.
Yes.
And Mr. Savay, doesn't going to two hours essentially do that?
Yeah.
Since it doesn't allow, no one has a two-hour shift? So it forces the, because I remember I worked on El Camino and I could never park anywhere besides the permitted lot because I would get ticketed since I was working an eight-hour shift and everything was two-hour parking. So isn't that part of what this is trying to do too, to keep the employees from doing half their shift, going out at lunch and coming back and parking it for the rest of the shift?
That's correct. This would encourage people to take public transportation, that's right.
And since this is the last section of Laurel that has this, it's not protected by any environmental--
No.
--protection agency? No? All right. Little joke.
The, I believe we had a similar issue with Trader Joe's right after it opened. And there can be an impact on the residential area, on the next block, like, say, Walnut. So that's the potential downside, is that residential parking starts to get eaten up during the day. So sometimes you kick it down the street and it might create a new problem, but it does seem like for the businesses there, because they fundamentally changed, it seems like the right decision to make at this point in time, and they'll see what effect that may have. Are there any other comments? Mr. Grocott?
I just had a question. It's somewhat related to what Mr. Lewis was saying, and that is, what's the parking situation on, I'm not sure what street that is?
This one?
Yes.
St. Francis?
Yeah, on St. Francis and then on Eaton in terms of, is it, I don't suppose that has any timed situation on it or signage or anything that restricts it?
I can speak to St. Francis. I'm not as familiar with Eaton. But on St. Francis, the Transportation and Circulation Commission is currently studying St. Francis, the parking between El Camino and Walnut, I believe is the street up here. And so we're working through these issues, and we've done some parking studies here. There's the alley, and then it starts residential in here. So currently, there's no restriction on parking in here. And then there's red curbing on the other side of the street and some two-hour restriction in this location. So again, we're starting to take a look at that with the TNC. I think by January, we should be, mid-January, we should be completed with our analysis and the TNC will make a recommendation or not. I mean, if they decide not to do anything, then you won't see it. But if they do, you'll see some recommendations coming up.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, just one change. I noticed that we need to delete this block from the four-hour parking section in the code. So when it comes back for adoption, you'll see the two changes, not just the one section.
Okay. Sounds great. Can we have a motion?
I make a motion to introduce ordinance number--
1440.
1440, ordinance of the city of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos municipal code, amending Chapter 10.32 by adding two-hour parking regulations for Laurel Street.
For a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. And with that, our meeting is adjourned for the night.